Did you hear it now? Is there one out? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Especially all city council, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, two oh, six P M. And, uh, we call the order, Mr. Juan Cal. We plead this at a moment of prayer.
The Popehead, most gracious Father, God, we thank you for this time. We thank you for this moment. God, we ask that you continue to be with us, continue to dwell with us. You said that we should always pray for those who govern us, God, so we ask you to continue to continue to bless our city council, God, with wisdom, understanding, guidance, continue to be with them in their decision-making, God. God, we ask that you would also continue to be with the community, God, to lift us up where we are. Give us the strength that we need to endure the things that we need to endure. Most of all, God, we are last, that we are present with our points of awareness. We thank you for the things that you have already done and the things that you will continue to do. So we ask that your son, Jesus, may we pray.
Amen.
If we have any further comments, we'll move right into the, uh... Uh, when the speaker is clear with I'm going to say it this time, just to see if there's any clarification from any of the council. If not, if not debate or discretion, it's just a form of clarification if there's something that you're not to position. No problem. I don't think so. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, uh, Mayor, City Council, distinguished members of the community. Uh, my name is Michael North running. I'm a member of BMW Post six three eight zero. I'm currently serving as our post quartermaster. Uh, for those who may not be aware, uh, we do have a BMW post located two fifteen one North Main Street. That is the old post office in downtown, uh, no longer out at the river. Uh, our post covers both Jasper and Newton counties. So I'm here tonight to talk about some of the community outreach programs that we're involved with and how the community can help support us in, uh, upending our mission. First thing I would like to bring up is this Friday, August first, we have a veteran stand down. It will be at the Jasper County Annex Building. It is from nine A M. to one P M. These stand downs have been conducted all around Southeast Texas and three years ago, Jasper County started hosting them. These programs, uh, bring in vendors that are local and as far out as Beaumont and other areas, um, benefiting the homeless veterans, families, and homeless in our community. Giving them the opportunity to come in, have any resources like, uh, the V A, uh, B for B, Veterans for Veterans. Uh, a lot of your local healthcare and hospice organizations are there, uh, as well as, uh, different things. There will be giveaways for veterans and homeless, uh, resources, just helping them connect and find out what they may be ultimate for for benefits or getting them going in the right way. Uh, our post will actually be there to, uh, recruit and share information on the community as well to help them out. Um, the other thing that we have coming up is every year, the BMW hosts a scholarship essay contest. Uh, this is for, uh, our Patriots' pin, which is for our sixth through eighth grade students. That is a written essay. And for our ninth through twelfth grade students, there is a scholarship essay. It's an audio essay. Uh, it can all be done through a program called Scholar Sound, which actually gives the students access to other scholarships, which are out there. Everything can be done online. Uh, deadline is October thirty first by midnight. Uh, we do reach out to all the schools. We have, uh, five or six schools between the two counties that we send this information out to, but it's also available to homeschool students, uh, private academies, Christian schools, and things like that. Uh, information can be found on our Facebook page. If you look up, uh, BMW Post six three eight zero, they can be found on there. Uh, you can also go to, uh, BMW's main website, vfw dot O R G. And you can download the actual paper applications, which can be submitted at the local post level. Uh, these scholarships are huge. The national prize for Patriots' pin because they can compete at post, district, state, and national levels, create scholarships all along the way. The Patriots' pin national prize is five thousand dollars and the national prize for Voice of Democracy is thirty five thousand dollars. So if the students, uh, play their cards right and work really hard, I mean, they can get some huge scholarships. And the great thing is, so let your kids know, your grandkids, neighbors' kids, whatever. They can do this all the way from the sixth grade to the twelfth grade. So if they're that good, they're winning scholarships every single year. On the Voice of Democracy side, the great thing about it, that student comes to us, shows us an acceptance letter to the college, we send the money straight to the college. So they don't ever have to worry about, oh, I lost my job or anything like that. We take care of making sure that those funds get to those schools for their students. Uh, lots of other programs we have going throughout the year. Uh, we have various fundraisers and different events that we host at the post, uh, and around town. You'll see us at different events, uh, here in Jasper, Newton, uh, down in Buna as well, uh, for things like, uh, Fourth of July, Christmas in the Park, and different things like that, just putting out information for our local veterans. Uh, so if you have the opportunity, when you hear about us doing a fundraiser, please come out and help support our local veterans because that money that we do make, because we are a nonprofit, we're a five oh one C three, so we don't pay money for profit. No one's on our payroll unpaid. This money goes into our post running and to put that money back out into the community to help local veterans and help our local community members. Uh, post is available for rental for different events. Uh, there's any questions that you have, uh, again, you can find us on Facebook. Catch me, uh, look on there. We have phone numbers where you can reach out to us. And you can also send email inquiries to jaspervfw six three eight zero at gmail dot com, uh, for any questions that you may have. Uh, I really appreciate the time that you've allowed me to come up and speak. And I'm sure I've missed something because we have a lot of stuff going on throughout the year. Uh, the biggest thing is, we can't accomplish our mission without our membership. But most important, we can't accomplish our mission without support from the community because, uh, our community is what drives us. It gives us our purpose for the reason that we're going out and doing these things. So, uh, may I come in and spread a little positivity and encouragement for our communities tonight? Yes, sir?
Yes, thank you. My question is, this is not just for children or grandchildren, it's for all students, correct?
The scholarships?
Yes.
Yeah, scholarships are open. You need one. Any, any child six through twelfth grade can apply. Yes, sir. And in fact, if you'd like, for the C and B, we got to give this. Look, you're working on it.
Mr. Holmes, would you like to make a question?
Thanks.
Is, is the water on?
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I am Derek Kyle, um, chaplain of Harbor Hospice, as well as pastor of Moss Temple. Also the area representative, the newly appointed area representative for the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Uh, if y'all are familiar with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, there's one thing that we always do. Uh, on an annual basis, we've been doing the Fields of Faith. The Fields of Faith is coming up on September the twenty fourth. It's held at Bulldog Stadium. It is one event that, um, first year we did it, we had well over a thousand young people, um, close to a hundred, uh, gave their lives to Christ. Uh, last year, we had well over fifteen hundred. This year, we're expecting two thousand plus. And if you can imagine that, uh, awesome praise and worship, awesome word of God going forward. And that's the thing that Fields of Faith does. Uh, me as well as being the area representative, I encompass running sixteen schools. So I go all the way out to San Onofre, all the way to Buna, all the way from Woodville, all the way to... Breckville. Yeah, I don't remember. Um, all those schools, high schools and junior highs. I try to go and help the coaches as well as help the athletes, help them see a better perspective. Um, that's something that we're focusing on doing. Um, also, I just want to say this as a word of encouragement. As, as, uh, Mike has already mentioned, that the city council, you guys are doing an awesome job. Here's one thing that I learned from my grandmother, who was a shangal, um, one of my cousins as well, Walter Kyle's. Um, but the thing is, they said, if you can't say anything good, don't say anything at all. So my thing that I've always learned, my thing that I've always encouraged, and my thing that I always end with every last one of my events that I've spoken at is always good, better, best. Never let it rest until you're good, is your better, is your better, is your best. So I think if what you're doing is a good job, I would encourage you to continue to do your best job, to always do a better job. Now, if you have any questions that may be there.
Well, personally, I would like to thank you from the, uh, hospice, Department of Hospice, had my wife and her lady stage. And these work that y'all are doing with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, just awesome, fantastic, awesome. Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kyle. All right, folks, we're going to move out of the discussion.
Excuse me, a couple lists.
Nope, excuse me, I want to say, I'm sorry.
Signed in.
I only got two minutes. This is right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Apologize.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Thank you once again for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to bring something to your attention that may or may not be fully understood or acknowledged. At the June ninth, two thousand twenty five city council meeting, a motion was made by council member DeMarcus Holmes at the twenty seven ten mark in the public video record. His motion was as follows, quote, "I make a motion that we leave the three that were appointed correctly, Mr. Laquinn, Ms. McCroskey, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Miranda, and Ron Sample. And then we take and we put, we leave four of the, I know they've been there seventeen to twenty thousand years. I understand that, but we leave four spaces for four active of those old ones that we choose the four here already. So that leaves us ten spaces. That means each council member gets to choose two people, so that makes seventeen," end quote. Mr. Hildebrand seconded the motion. Mr. Mayhard then interjected with "good choice", which was out of order, and then the mayor proceeded to call the vote. The vote was as follows. Ms. Warren abstained, Ms. McCroskey voted no, and Mr. Holmes, Mr. Hildebrand, and Mr. Mayhard voted yes. The motion passed. At the thirty minute fifty three second mark, the city attorney advised the council to hold a workshop to further clarify the structure. Then at thirty one minutes and thirty seconds, Mr. Holmes attempted to amend the motion. While the amended motion passed, this violates the Roberts Rules of Order according to Article Six, Section thirty seven. Once a motion has been passed, it cannot be amended. It must be rescinded and put on the, on the agenda for the next meeting. Therefore, the amendment is invalid and should not be recognized. This has serious implications. Since June ninth, JEDCO has continued to meet without a legal quorum. A minimum of five members is required, yet there are currently only three legitimate board members. That makes all actions, votes, and financial decisions by JEDCO since then illegitimate and unlawful, especially when taxpayer dollars are involved. I respectfully urge the council to hire a qualified parliamentarian to attend all future meetings of the city council and advise on proper procedure. I also strongly recommend that every council member seek certification in Roberts Rules of Order. A lack of understanding or worse, willful disregard of these rules has led to years of confusion, procedural chaos, and questionable decisions that undermine public trust in this council. Finally, I'm calling on this council to immediately void all JEDCO actions taken since June ninth and to schedule an emergency meeting to reestablish a lawful, properly seated board. This public, our public deserves confidence that decisions affecting our economy and community are being made legally, ethically, and transparently. Thank you.
Part of that, that board not be legal?
That's correct.
We have a legal opinion?
No, no, since you're...
Point of order. Point of order. I would just like the record to show that in the history of our city, to my knowledge, we have never engaged anyone during public comment. It is their right to bring their grievances before this governing body and say whatever they want to say as long as they're not threatening anyone. You're not allowed to interrogate them or, or to ask them questions or try to discredit them. It is their constitutional right to speak before this body. Please let the record show that, to my knowledge, never in the history of our city has a city council decided to do this. And I believe it's violating their constitutional rights, Mayor.
Part of the mission, we're going to have to take it up with legal advice.
At best offer of legal advice, we have currently received from the board. It says, yes, a governing body may address an individual during quoted comments. And that is under the Texas Open Meetings Act. I have the section here if you'd like to see them. Interactions are somewhat limited. And the limit is, in this case, I would like some clarification on how you presume the board is illegal and they did not have a quorum, since I attended the meeting with quorum.
Point of order. My point is, is that it's our constitutional right to be able to speak before this governing body. And that is not a clarification. You're, you're seeking to debate someone who's come to speak to this council and that is her constitutional right. That is my point of order. Without interference from the government, that is the constitution, and it trumps any attorney or this governing body right here now.
Okay. Let's go. We will take this up with this quorum. We will find out what is legal and what is not legal. All right. Public discussion, public discussion is over. So we will now move into the workshop. Discussing the JEDCO board membership. I don't know how we're going to do this. Yeah, I don't know. I think we need to go down from District One to District Five and State One. Anybody think there's a central way to get to the board?
Mayor, we recognize, can I just ask? Okay.
Just, just go.
Okay.
May you?
Our, our rules, point of order. Point of order. My, my point is, is that our city council rules under council proceeding state that council members will speak in council meetings when recognized by the presiding officer whose recognition will not be unreasonably withheld.
Not unreasonable withheld. I'm going down. Forward.
I understand. I wanted to ask about the council member that's not here. Are we even? That was my question.
Well, I asked everyone to go. We need to hold on. Red pot.
Was invited to join the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Holmes, how would you like to say?
As I said before, my suggestion was to leave the three. Is that right? We voted for the three to stay on. Am I, is that correct? Or is it the other way? And the other two? And I think the other ones should come out. Um... Now, I have another suggestion. Can I make two?
Perfect.
Okay. So the ones that want them to come out, here's the deal. Don't let them vote anybody else on there. If you want to keep the ones that's already on there, you do so. Is that okay? I mean, that's, that's my people. You know, still want the ones that's already on there, just leave them on there. If you want them on there, you put them back on. You vote your three or your two.
Leave which ones?
Whatever one y'all want.
Well, and we're going to move around twice, so we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Um... The rule says that we can add and subtract or leave it alone. And those people that we leave alone continue to serve indefinitely until they are added or subtracted. I would like to suggest that of the existing members who showed up for a quorum at the JEDCO meeting and transacted JEDCO business, and I will list them. Miss Tracy Morgan, Emery Limerick, Bill Nelson, Charles Warren, Chris Lanier, Mr. Willie King, Martin McDonald, Dr. Larry Brown, and Laquint Hildebrand, all be reappointed to the board tonight.
You didn't mention Ronnie Sample. Oh, see, he mentioned Laquint.
That was nine names, sir.
Ronnie Sample was also there.
Uh, yes, yes.
You had mentioned everybody but you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I propose that we, on the first round, solidify the existing senior board to maintain institutional memory and work through the processes that are currently being worked through by that group. Without, if we wipe those people out, we take the institutional memories and all the projects they're currently working on, walk out the door with them, and that will cripple us.
How many?
Well, let me say one thing. In the rules, in the workshop, the audience is not to participate in the workshop. That's just my rule.
Yes, I think it would be helpful, um, to read something from the Texas Attorneys Association. It's the Texas City Attorneys Association. I'm sure Mr. Moran is familiar with it. And what this says is, is that it's helpful to get a better understanding regarding the statutory foundations for economic development corporations. The E D C works on behalf of the city. That's Texas Government Code five zero one zero five one. The E D C is a nonprofit corporation that has the powers, privileges, and functions of a nonprofit corporation incorporated under Texas law, subject to the Development Corporation Act and the control of the governing body of the corporation's authorizing unit. That's Texas Government Code five zero one zero five four. The Board of Directors are appointed by the city council, and they may remove a director for cause or at will. That's Texas Government Code five zero one zero six two. Bylaws must be approved by the city council. That's Texas Government Code five zero one zero six four. The city council must approve all E D C programs and expenditures and annually review any financial statements of the corporation. Plus, the city council is entitled to access the corporation's books and records at any time. That's Texas Government Code five zero one zero seven three. The E D C board may only amend its certificate of formation with the approval of the city council, but the city council can amend the E D C certificate of formation at their sole discretion without the consent of the E D C board. That's Texas Government Code five zero one three zero one. All assets on dissolution transfer back to the city. That's Texas Government Code five zero one four zero six. Looking at the provisions of the Texas, of the Development Corporation Act, it is clear that the legislature intended E D Cs to function on behalf of and as part of the city creating the corporation. The city's control and authority over the E D C is most fundamental aspect is clear. The city and the E D C the city created are entwined. In addition to the control the city exercises over the E D C, the statute requires that a municipal attorney receive training on the operation of an E D C every two years. I just thought it was important for us to understand that, that the E D C functions under, under our, our discretion, under the city councils. So what you asked was, what was my question of what I think needs to happen? I believe that the current board is in violation of their bylaws. Um, also, I've heard Mr. Garza's opinion referred to multiple times. Mr. Garza stated in his opinion, one of the things that he said was that, let me make sure that I directly, uh, quote Mr. Garza. But one of the things that he said in his opinion was, is that he recommended staggered two-year terms. This is it. Garza. Mr. Garza stated, quote, "It is within the council's authority to adopt the resolution to identify the number of board members and to list who those board members should be. My only recommendation is that the city council, when appointing the JEDCO board, appoint the members to staggered terms. To have a staggered term, you need to have a break in between terms. And the people that are being recommended have been on there for multiple years at a time. Ten years, fifteen years, nine years, eight years, all of them after two years." I agree with Councilwoman Horn. I believe that we need to keep the three that were legally appointed in May of twenty twenty four by the former council. That is Laquint Hildebrand, Jennifer Miranda, and Ronnie Sample. And then each one of us need to choose two people to put on the board. If you would like any of the senior members to stay, then you need to choose those as your nominees because if I feel, I feel in my opinion that it's in violation of the bylaws and it's wrong to reappoint someone who is in violation of the bylaws. So if anyone here on the council wants those that have been there for all those years, then they need to be responsible for that. The entire council shouldn't be held responsible for that. That's what I think needs to happen.
I think what should happen is, we first should determine a number of directors. I don't have a problem with seventeen. I don't have a problem even with nineteen. But I do think it would be, it would be, uh, a foolish decision to not approve at least five or six of those current JEDCO board members. Who, by the way, anyone that's there now that's been proactive, been totally engaged, they don't want to be there for just a few more months. So we could easily, you gotta have staggered terms. That's a given. Um, they would be a good basis for the, the one-year term. And then the three of us that are returning for our second year of the first term, when this, this current year ends, we're coming off too. So there's nine members right there that would be coming off. And maybe, they might be reapproved, reappointed, who knows? So I do think it's important we leave that. And we've got, whether Mr. Holmes makes it here tonight or not, it's going to depend, uh, on whether he shows up. And then it will depend on what number of members we agree would be a, a good working number as to how many nominations each of us get. And then each nomination would have to be approved individually.
He said he wasn't giving a handoff. Yeah. They mark us. And, and he been hearing what we're doing? Well, uh, can, can y'all hear him?
Yeah, I can.
You still there? Well, they said we can do you on FaceTime if we can see you. But I can't see you now.
Let the record be taken, they're deals on FaceTime.
Okay? No.
What is, what's that email? Is that true?
We know it's a city, I'm saying no use that, she just emailed us another one.
Okay.
I've, I've got you back, I've got you back. Uh, let the record states, I can't see him and hear him. All right, uh, we, we're going down, uh, we went through one time except for you. How would you like to see us go forward in picking a board?
Uh, I would like to go forward, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like, I would like to go forward with it the way I stated before that, uh, that we keep the, 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 the three that's on there. And the other council gets a thing down, but you know, they're on too. Can you, can you tell me, um, the senior members that are, are helping fix the thing?
Okay. Everybody got that? Everybody hear that? Okay. Uh, can you hear us as we're talking? Okay. Ms. Horn?
Yeah.
Would you like to go back around the second half?
Say the same thing I said the first time.
Okay.
My, my suggestion was, leave the three on. And take everybody else off. Let them reapply. If they want to come on, let them reapply. Now, if that doesn't work, that's my first opinion. My second one is... Oh, my second one was, if everybody want to be on, let everybody, let the council members that's already on here, if they want to keep the ones that's existing on there now, let them vote for them to be on there. That's what I said, that's my second.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I actually have a question on this part. If we pick two, can we have a second round of picks? Because we have got quite a few seats to fill, and one round of two apiece is not going to do that.
May I be recognized?
Okay.
May I be recognized? Um, I believe that our city attorney said that we do not have to nominate all seventeen, uh, members to at one time. That you only needed five to be able to have a board, to be able to vote. I believe that's what Mr. Moran said, if he wants to correct me. If, is he there? Mr. Moran? Um, I...
There he is.
Yes. You, you, you said, Mr. Moran, before that all seventeen don't have to be chosen at one time. So if, if we were gonna choose two by, for each council member, choose two members for the board and keep the three that were nominated in May, then that would give us thirteen members. So you said before that we don't have to nominate all seventeen at one time at our previous meeting. Is that correct?
Or, uh, the City Council can, uh, has to appoint a minimum of five members to the EDC. And after that, it's up to y'all how many y'all want to have. But y'all have to have five. I would suggest following Garza's recommendation. Um, if you have any more questions, please let me know.
If I could give my second turn to go around, I agree with Councilwoman Horn. I, I believe that we need to keep the three that were legally appointed in May of 2024 by the previous council, and everyone else needs to come off. They've been on here for many years. And if you think that they need to be on here, um, any council member here, then that needs to be your nominee. It shouldn't have to be the entire council's nominee. We appoint to multiple boards. The JEDCO Board is not the only board we appoint to, and I have never seen anything like this before. Not with SRMPA, not with the Regional Planning Commission that we appoint to. I have never seen any board request that we keep the people that were there and then allow each one of us to choose someone. So my recommendation is, same as Councilwoman Horn, either pull everybody off and keep the three. Or if you want to appoint these senior members, then each individual council member that wants that needs to include them for their pick. But I feel thirteen is plenty. If each, if each one of us picked two and the three that were already on there legally, that's thirteen. If we wanted to come back and appoint more later, that he, the attorney is saying we can't. But that's just my opinion.
My second time is...
Marcus, you still there?
I'm here.
Yeah, I just lost the picture.
DeMarcus needs to take his second turn. Let him speak.
Yeah, uh. Have you been hearing everything that's going on? Okay. If, if your round may, uh, may up, so if you've got any changes or any other further comments.
No, I'm, 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 I think I stated what I'm going, what I, uh, what did he say again?
Yeah, please.
Okay, no problem. Uh, what I said was we keep, we keep the three that's already been there, that was already previously nominated by the, uh, previous council. Uh, we keep, uh, maybe one or two of the, uh, the senior members that are already there, you know, just, just for, uh, for guidance or whatever, each, each council member.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Begin back there.
Yes, sir.
You still correct?
I, uh, again, my, my, uh, thought is not gonna change. I, I think the first step, the key step to begin with is a predetermined number. Thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, the, we need to die. We need as many as we can, just because of the diversity of the experiences of the people. That's the backbone and the strength of these, uh, projects completed, luring people to Jasper. And I believe my thoughts and Mr. Holmes's thoughts and, and to a point, Ms. Horn's thoughts are all, they're all in the same melted pot.
Okay. Can I ask something? One, one little thing. Is that okay? Can I ask Mr. Hildebrand something?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, I, I can ask the mayor.
Oh, it's...
You can ask me anything you want.
Okay. Um...
Any, any great changes? I mean, we've been through it twice.
No, no, it's not, it's just a question.
Sure.
The projects that these, um, people are doing, we, I mean, I would like to see, uh, here, what kind of projects they got, that they're doing that's really important. So I'm just saying. I don't know.
Oh, the, the...
Cause I never hear. I went to, I go to the meetings, but you know, I'm like, if I could just hear what they're, if they could come to the City Council meeting and they can come and stand here and tell us how far they are on that project, what important project are they doing? I need to know that. And I think the people, our taxpayers, would like to know that.
So can I answer now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, I can tell you this, that we, we all know that, or most of us, the big one is the Bells. But here's what people don't know. There, there's a couple of other businesses that are watching that Bells transition, that move. If they land in Jasper, at least one of these other two will be in Jasper right behind them. But a lot of, this is a lot of the reasons we need these people to stay. At, you know, at least five or six, because a lot of those, the, the Bells, we, there is some documentation that can, that you can lay your eyes on, you know, sheets of paper you can hold on to. Um, but then a lot of those are still in the early conversation pieces.
Mr. Hildebrand, traditionally at EDCs with economic development boards, you have an executive director who brings those businesses and those opportunities for those cities before a board, and then the board votes on those different opportunities. Is that not the situation that we have with our EDC? I understand that Mr. Hopkins is not currently there, and he hasn't been in quite some time. But your argument over and over is, is the open files and the, the projects that they're involved in. Is that not the way that, that it works here in our city? Uh, the executive director of the EDC should be bringing these businesses, not these individual members. They should vote on it, correct?
Well, the, the, the executive director, like with any organization, they don't do everything themselves.
So they don't bring jo, they don't bring these opportunities before the cities? Okay.
They do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and then the board votes on it in, in, in other cities, correct?
In other cities?
Yes. Yes, I'm asking, is our situation different?
Different, no. No, our, our situation, for a type A, our situation, how we operate, how they function, i- is a mirror image of other cities.
Okay, so then, so then your argument to, to leave these people on the board that, that you, you're very adamant about is that these, uh, these members that have been on here all these years are involved in all of these projects. That's not typically what happens with an EDC board. Usually, the executive director brings those opportunities to the city. And so I, I don't understand the argument of that. And, but to Ms. Horn, uh, Councilwoman Horn's point, Councilwoman Horn's point, I've attended all these meetings as well. And a, as a council member, I haven't received anything, uh, from JEDCO that says any of these open files are involved, that who they're involved with. Bells may or may not come. But I believe other people in our community deserve the opportunity to serve on this board. I don't think we should appoint people on whether we may get a, a thing going with Bells or whether we don't. I think we should give everyone the opportunity and that this board should reflect our community where everyone feels like they're representative of this board. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely. And, and to one of Ms. Horn's, uh, comments, I can assure everybody, I'm just a board member of JEDCO, but there's gonna be some things that change. You know, and it's not just JEDCO. It's, at, everything in town. In my whole adult lifetime, the biggest thing that has irritated me, frustrated me, disappointed me is the lack of people working together, the lack of communication. Everybody wants to do their own thing, their own way. Some of this is gonna change. But, but back to your, your concern, the executive, the executive director lures potential businesses to Jasper. And then those board members with subcommittees, they're the ones that work behind the scenes. So it takes, it, it takes the village. And I agree that, I, I've said this for ten months, and you've heard me say it, I don't care who's on the board. I just know who works, what works, how it should work. And, and I'm telling you, we would be remiss in our duties to the people of Jasper um, if we didn't retain some of these people. And, and the key is this, it's not so much even how, how can we assist anybody in this area? How can we assist that group in another area? It's the relationships that's already created. That's the strength.
Can I be, I'm sorry, at, at Councilwoman Horn's point.
If we don't sell this and do this right, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna have a petition. And if we can get two hundred, two hundred names on that petition, there won't be a JEDCO anymore. Because they're gonna come up in November, it's gonna be on the ballot. In November, and it won't be a JEDCO. So I'm saying, let's do it right and let's do it fair.
I agree. I agree.
If I could speak to Mr. Hildebrand's point, I understand about committees, and they do the behind the scenes and, and, but, Mr. Hildebrand, you're on the SRMPA board as well, correct?
Correct.
And this is millions and millions and millions of dollars. And, and I'm sure there's a lot of relationships involved on the SRMPA board as well. But this kind of thing, you don't see that you're wanting to keep the exact same ones. It's a, it's a two-year term, correct?
Well, you're not comparing apples to apples, so...
Well, well, what I meant was, is that each one of these boards have roles and bylaws. And the cur, and the current members that you're speaking of, that are so valuable, have not followed the bylaws. We sit here today due to those members, because there were not, reappointments were not done. And I, I agree with Councilwoman Horn, because I ask citizens, and citizens come and talk to me e- every day, just about, every other day. And, and they want this handled, but not just so we can just move forward. They want it handled fairly. And the bylaws state two years and two years that they should serve. If not, I am also hearing that they, that this board will be dissolved. And I believe that will be very sad for Jasper. To try to leave an old power structure in place that would prevent new people from serving, and it caused the dissolution of this board, in my opinion, I think that would be, that would be terrible.
Well, and, and I respect your opinion, and up to a point, you know, you're, you're online, you're on target. The difference being that it's, it's a transitional phase. You can't wipe the board totally clean and then expect, you know, it'll take someone, for example, let's say the Bells group and the ones bird dogging them, coattailing them. You know, who, nobody's gonna know who to contact, nobody's gonna know what conversations have happened. Uh, but I will say this, it's, it's, again, I don't care who's on the board. I just know we've gotta have, we've gotta maintain some of the current makeup of that board only for the sake of transitioning. This is not, um, I'm not advocating that they stay, it's, I think I said it clearly while they go. They don't want to be on this board any more than one year. They're ready to go now, but they know that there's still work to do.
They don't have anything else. Okay. I, I served on a board at Southeast Texas Regional Planning, uh, Commission, and they change every, every two years, depending on who's in office, because these are, you have to be elected to be on this board. I'm, I've never, never heard of anything like this before.
Well...
The ones who sit in the vice presidency's, even down there, they switch. And so if you're, if you feel that this is what needs to happen, um, would you, cause I, I want to be sure that I understand Councilwoman, um, Horn's, uh, thoughts of what she thought should happen. Are you willing to nominate the ones that you feel are so important as, as your picks to go on this board? Because that, that is what she suggested, and that's what I also agree with. If they're so important to stay on this board, are you willing to nominate them as your picks? Because I don't feel that we all should have to. That doesn't happen on any other board. And it's never happened with JEDCO before either.
If, well, let me, let me speak to the other boards. First of all, SRMPA, very small board, they don't have any, they don't have any relationships outside of, of the board that they have to manipulate or work with or facilitate processes through. And their, their, the makeup of that board is real simple. It's the simplest thing. I mean, it's like every year, someone's term is ending, but they don't, SRMPA doesn't select those members. Each, each member city feeds them the board members. So it's real simple, real clean. Um, it's not even remotely similar to what, what this is. And they don't have, now, now, Liberty has an EDC, Livingston does not, not, not a, they do not have an EDC. Um. But back to your question, if, if the council says that if any of us want to appoint and approve a current senior member, as Mr. Holmes called it, if that's what it takes, I'll do that. I mean, I, I've got two great members that are young that would be good for the next however many years. Uh, but if I have to forego new members, just because... Yeah, just because this council decides we don't want to do that, I'll be glad to nominate current members.
Well, we have never done this before, where the council is being told that you can pick two or three or however many, but you gotta keep these that we want. You gotta keep these... You got to keep these senior members, oh, sorry, excuse me, not that we want, but senior members that are on there, the board just cannot function without them. And I believe that we're in this situation, you mentioned another board, is because they follow their bylaws, see? And that's why you have people changing all the time, because see, JECO did not follow their bylaws. These very members that, that you believe need to remain on the board.
I think most people in town believe they need to stay. But I will say this, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think you're understanding. I'm not opposing anything that anybody is saying. I'm just telling you how I, what I know will work best and work right, and it's that simple. And we all know why we're here now. We all know that, you can't dispute it. It's very frustrating.
To appoint members is why we're here right now. And on any other board, on any other board that you've ever served on, because I know that you've been in, in local government, involved in multiple boards, the school board, multiple boards. Have you ever seen the condition of appointments be made on senior members that need to be retained? That they didn't follow their bylaws that state two-year staggered terms?
I have.
And a legal opinion that also recommended two-year staggered terms? So you, you have served on a board that didn't follow their bylaws to change members?
Yes, a couple of state boards, as a matter of fact. Especially in a case where, like this city council, it's been made clear in numerous writings, we've got the authority to do whatever we want.
Can I ask a question? I wasn't here during this, but you keep saying that JECO didn't follow the bylaws, and the city, following the city's bylaws. And appointing?
I asked Mr. Kelly to speak at a previous council meeting, and I asked him if it was placed on a calendar, I believe was the question from Mr. Mayhar. And Mr. Kelly, it was, it was your statement that the city was never responsible to be sure that these bylaws were being, every two years, reappointments, the city never did that, correct?
Well, were council members aware?
I was not aware. Once I became aware, I asked for a legal opinion, the former council. Asked for a legal opinion, as soon as I became aware.
Did it get put on the agenda to re-up the JECO board?
Did, did it get put on the agenda to re-up, ask for a legal opinion? Because no one had been reappointed since 2017. This is not a 2025 issue, this is a multiple year, not following their bylaws.
But, the, the city? Didn't, didn't, didn't the city bylaws state that the council, when they bring up them, they put them on?
This is not what Mr. Kelly said to us in a... Mr. Kelly, can you please go to the podium and say what had happened in the past with, with board members?
Mayor of council, best of the knowledge, in the past, each time they needed board members to come up, JECO board brought a group of names to the city council, and that gave them attention.
Was the city, was the city council ever responsible? Was it ever put on a calendar? Was the city council ever responsible, to your knowledge, of, of making sure that these reappointments were done and that JECO was following their bylaws? We trusted them to follow their bylaws.
We never put it on a calendar, because it was up to the JECO board to bring it back to the city. Best of my knowledge, and all that's with their bylaws, really, and how far as they, they, the council approves. Whoever, you know, they want to put on there, they all need to have. As far as bringing them to the city council for past issues, I've been...
How many years, Mr. Kelly? Have you been here 35 years?
I have been always their councilman, since just about 50. But they brought the names to the council, and it was time to read and state on for a new term.
Okay, can I summarize a little bit? We've got to move forward into the open session, and we turn now against a little note taken from first, how many board members are moving on there? And then how are we going to get the nomination up to a board member? Is it going to be one person, one person, is it going to take a vote?
Can I be right, can I? I believe each one of us represent our districts. And so when they've been nominated in the past, actually, we have a former council member here in the audience, you, you didn't vote down that person's appointments. I believe each council member can choose who they want, they represent their district. The people of Jasper elected me, just like the people of Jasper elected the former council members to represent them in my district. And so I, I do not believe that it would be fair for me to have a pick to go on this board, and then any council member voted down. No. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Couple of quick things if you don't mind. We are blessed in this community to have this wonderful group of people willing to step forward and serve on this board. And hopefully, we're going to get them there in the foreseeable future. My question is, how many tonight is each of us going to get to nominate? If we do round robin one at a time, it's going to be quite consuming. If we follow this annual thinking, then each of us would bring two, maybe even three names forward. So I need some leadership on that, sir.
I think we're asking for a lot of troubles if we just take two nominations and then we don't vote, because that would be an extremely long process, but you had from there on ago that the city council can at will remove anybody. So there's going to be someone on the board that the next council meeting, somebody's going to vote or make a nomination to remove them. One, two, three, somewhere down the line. So it saves me like JECO's interest that we have some kind of nominating process to give them the best piece of people possible to go on their board. Personally, which you'd have to change bylaws and everything, but I've, I've got a sales history. And personally, I think JECO should bring us the members that they want in us voting. But that's not even about...
That's not even about, the city council appoints them, not JECO at all, not EDC.
That be a recommendation?
Yeah, but, I'm, I'm talking to a sales history, because that would be like me telling Bob Gary, we can, I don't...
That is what we're supposed to do there, as a council, we're supposed to appoint and remove. That is our job.
No, I'm talking on the board, I'm talking, I'm talking to the, I'm talking to the board, so... Marcus, you got any other comments?
Can I, can I speak to last question? Can I be right now?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Mayhar, I have no problem making a motion, that, that's how it's always worked before. And so I have no problem making a motion to remove all members from the JECO board, with the exception of the three that were legally appointed in May of 2024. And each council member choose two, starting with District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, District 5. I have no problem at all making a motion to do that, and that is how it, how it's been done in the past. That, well, well, already the, the board is 17 members, I mean, that would be up to, to all of y'all. But I have no problem making a, a motion to do that.
So you, so you would support three?
If each one of us wanted to support three to be on that board, yes.
I'd be good with three.
I'd give a three.
Well, it would be 18, because we're going to keep the three that were legally appointed in May of 2024.
We can't have 18.
We can have 18, we can have as many as we want.
But you have not, no?
No, you don't have to, it's good to, it's, you're still going to need the same number of people.
You'll have to have, yeah.
And if the people really want to serve, they'll be there.
If I could say one more thing, you mentioned a few minutes ago that they would be bringing them before this board and removing people? I, I've never seen that, and I have no desire to bring anyone from JECO over here to remove them. I believe if JECO wanted them removed, they'd bring them before the board. That's, that, we don't do that. So I don't think you're going to have a problem with that, Mayor, that we're going to be bringing other people's picks before the council to be removed. I've never heard of that.
All right. Ms. Horn? Are you in favor of each council person being taken out of this board?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhar?
Yes. Cross it.
Which one's clean?
This isn't Bishop Love's.
No, no, it's not, no, it is not.
And that's his, yeah, I'm good with her.
All right, so we can, we can adjourn it out of the workshop? Oh, tomorrow, I think so, I think so. Are you going to pick the three? We got our thumbs up. So we adjourn, we don't have to have most of the other workshops?
No, just adjourn.
Okay, we adjourned out of the workshop, and we're now hoping for...
I'll make a motion?
I see.
My motion is to remove all members, all current members from the JECO Jasper Economic Development Board, with the exception of the three who were legally appointed in May of 2024. That is Ronald Sample, Laquyn Hildebrand, and Jennifer Miranda. And then each council member choose three to be placed back on to the JECO board, beginning with District 1 and moving down the line until we have all chosen three.
I see.
I'm, I'm making sure they're getting everything. Go ahead, here, sir.
She did second me.
One second, I did not hear you before. All right, any, okay, we're going to, with this time, we go to the question. Any further discussion?
How are we going to determine one-year term versus two-year term?
I believe that the bylaws state two-year terms. I think we should continue, we should go by what the bylaws already stated, Mr. Hildebrand. It doesn't state anything about one-year terms.
Well, I mean, you got to have a first year, second year. So they're all coming up at the same time?
Well, if, if, if JECO themselves want to decide on that, but I believe their bylaws state two-year terms, so we should appoint for two-year terms.
It is a two-year term. Mr. Mayor?
Hey, guys, hey, guys, as, as the city attorney, as the city attorney, I'm going to recommend that they be appointed in staggered terms, staggered terms.
Would, would the board consider all returning board members be one-year term? All new board members be two-year term?
What do you mean by returning?
All board members?
Currently serving, currently serving board members that are reappointed.
That's not the motion, man.
No, we're having a discussion on this one, sir. Yep. Since we're trying to work out the one and two-year system, and Councilman Hildebrand mentioned that there was probably going to be an exodus, an exodus from the board pretty quickly anyway, so that's probably going to clear itself up pretty quickly.
I'm good with that. And the three, the three who are approved now, our, our term will be over at the end of this year.
So, so you're recommending everyone that we appointed today be appointed for one year or two years? I believe we're complicating the motion, I, I don't want the public to not understand what we're doing. So my motion was to remove everyone from the board, with the exception of the three legally appointed in May of 2024, Ronald Sample, Laquyn Hildebrand, and Jennifer Miranda. And for each council member, beginning with District 1, to appoint three each to the Jasper Economic Development Board. I believe that the JECO board is, is capable of handling any, any issues with people coming or leaving or, or when they're going to come up. I do know that it's staggered terms, because the bylaws state that it is. And if everybody's off and everybody's on at the same time, that's not the end of the world. I'm sure JECO from this point forward would bring that to the council's attention now that we know that, that they are responsible for that. I think we need to begin appointing to the board, and let's see the board.
There is a motion and a second.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have called for the question, call for the vote.
Vote me.
All in favor? Show of hands, please, if we need...
Let me hear it.
Marcus, it's better to show, a motion made and seconded and discussed that all board members be removed, except for the current three.
Okay, I got you, I got you, I thought we had changed.
No, no, and each, each council person nominate three new nominations.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. And since, since you're on it, we may lose you, doing the nominations now?
I guess, because we're going to need names to be able to make a motion, correct, Mr. Morgan?
We had the vote.
The market said he voted yes, I showed his thumbs up. The markets?
Yes, I'm here.
Since you're on the phone, and we may lose you or whatever, then you have three names that you would like to put in the nomination?
You got it.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I am Terrya Norworth.
Terrya Norworth.
Keith Scott.
Keith Scott.
Yeah, Keith Scott.
Keith, Keith Scott. Got you.
And Derek Seastrom.
Derek Seastrom?
Yes.
Do you know how to, do you know how to spell that?
S-E-A, S-T-R-U-N-T.
Got you. Marcus, all right. Ms. Horn?
I have Ray Charles Lewis. Bill...
That's a chance you speak up, man.
Okay, I, I have Ray Charles Lewis.
Ray Lewis.
Uh, Bill Grant.
Bill Grant.
And Maureen Bidwell.
Maureen Bidwell.
Uh, Ms. Tracy Morgan, Mr. Charles Warren, uh, and Ms. Jessie Lartson.
The market, did you hear those?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
My nominations are Terrya Norworth, who is already nominated, Tamela Parks, Tina Salata-Ride.
You need to, no, don't worry about Terry, go ahead, just, you have a board person that...
My board said she's older than I'm, yeah.
Pam McDowell.
Pam McDowell.
McDonough, sorry.
Mr. Hildebrand?
I'm going to say Charles Warren's already on the list, right? Okay, I'm going to say Bill Nelson, Nicole Calvin.
I'm gonna say Bill Nelson, Nicole Colvin, Chris Lanier.
Now we take a vote, right?
I think we need a nomination to accept these people.
Well, they've been nominated, so we just vote favor up?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and we have a second.
Okay. All in favor? Did you, are you, we're fixing to vote, all show of hands, please. All in favor?
Aye.
You got his hand up? All in, any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries, get out. Thank Jesus. Next item on the agenda is the consideration for approval of the Keith Contract Amendment of zoning ordinance. Project changing timeframe.
I make a motion at the table? That's it. That's it.
Motion taken. Second. Any discussion?
We don't have much time remaining, do we, on the contract? To complete the work?
We haven't had, we haven't extended other day, so we can't.
Oh, it is extended, okay. Fair, that's all I have.
Okay, that motion has been taken?
I'm waiting.
All in favor of the table? Raise your hands, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Bob?
I make a motion to remove it from the table and proceed to discuss zoning for our city.
Point of order. It already passed.
Yes, it's on the table, but it can also be removed from the table at the same meeting, because you did not put a time definite on it. Therefore, I can do a motion. Whether it passes or not, it gets a second. We'll see. But we need to talk about this.
Our motion has been made, take it off the table? Any second? Motion by, like, second?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We got this council discussion, open discussion. If there's not any?
I have none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn? Second?
Aye.
All in favor? We are adjourned.